And there's our fixed or shared cost budget. And then we also have water and sewer, which is its own fund. But it's still a, um, we call it an enterprise fund. It takes in money from water and sewer rates and pays water and sewer expenses. So a couple of the items in this year's budget that were some of the themes driving what we do. For those who knew the municipal finance, we do have our municipal finance 101 on Wednesday night. One, we can do that first. We had to switch things up because of some scheduling issues this particular year. But, uh, our decisions don't necessarily drive the budget. The reality of living under what we call Prop two and a half, which is the annual tax limitation for cities and towns in Massachusetts. Is what drives a lot of our decisions. The bulk of our revenue comes from property taxes. That amount can only go up two and a half percent a year. So in a year or any given year where inflation and costs are going up four, five, six percent. That ends up, of course, causing a, um, a challenge in those themes of some of those fixed costs are often what drive the decisions we have to make. Impacting the town budget this year most significantly is an increase in the cost of trash. Most of you know, we have waste management for trash removal. Over the five, the five year period of their contract, we're looking at close to a 60% increase in the cost of trash removal. Now, when the contract came up, we looked at other towns, we looked at other vendors. And unfortunately, just about everyone is in the same boat. Uh, some towns switched their vendors, but area towns and other towns in Massachusetts were seeing that same 50, 60% increase over the cost of a five year period. This year is the largest pickup increase in the, in the town budget or out of that five years. So it's a 22% increase in our cost of trash removal. We'll see in a slide, in a slide in just a minute, how significant that is for its impact on the general government budget. Health insurance, unfortunately, we're looking at roughly a 10% increase costing over $1.6 million. Health insurance in Massachusetts for cities and towns in the state is heavily regulated. We're required to offer health insurance at a certain level. We are part of the state pool. So all state employees and probably 40 or 50 cities or towns in Massachusetts are in the state's GIC or group insurance commission pool. It worked great for us because anyone familiar with, uh, health insurance knows you always look at your loss ratios versus what you pay. We're always sort of on the losing end. So other states and towns in the Commonwealth are actually picking up a little bit of our tab because it's basically the same rate for everyone. Cause it's a large pool for the state. One day we'd love to see if we can reverse that, but it is what it is. So this is the same increase that the Commonwealth faced as well as every city and town in the state. Unfortunately, with close to 1,000 employees, that 10% increase on health insurance translates to about $1.6 million. On the general government budget side, we did about 10% decreases in most of our operating budgets. You'll see as we go through the majority of any budget, whether it's a school budget or any of the town department budgets. It's 80% or more personnel costs. And that's just the cost of having a person. We actually don't have very large or very flexible operating budgets. Sometimes you can hear about what the state government can do and they, they move a lot of money around or the federal government just gets to print and make up money. I kind of wish we could do that at our level, but unfortunately every dollar in our budget is real. It comes from somewhere. And when 80 plus percent of our budget is people, what's left after you subtract things like utilities and fuel and, and vehicle repairs and building repairs. There's really nothing left. So again, you see news articles about, you know, the city of Boston wants to start spending heavily on this program or that program. We don't have those kinds of funds available. We're generally restricted in just trying to get through every year. We did rebuild what we call our personnel charts up, uh, from the ground up this year. Every year we pick a different element of the budget and we do a really deep dive and internal audit into what our specific numbers for that line are. Every line item, what's being spent, what's being expended out of it, expended out of it. To make sure that we're not just practicing, practicing incrementalism where we say, well, we spend about $5,000 on paper. So we know the contract went up 4%, let's just increase it 4%. Every year we pick a different area, really dive down, look into every line item, every transaction, that line item. We did it this year with the personnel costs, which catches a lot of errors. It's a good process to go through. And to be clear, when I say we, I mean the very talented staff in the accounting departments is the actual folks who did it, not, um, not myself. Oh, yep. Uh, we'll take question from online. Ivan Monahan.
Sorry, my hand was just up for the original, not having the booklet, sorry.
Okay, no worries. And then, uh, Anne? Okay, all right, those books will be available at town meeting or at the next two sessions as well. So let's talk a little bit about what that trash increase looks like when you're looking at the general government budget. About $500,000 is the trash increase. 226 dollars per ton to $285 per ton. We pay for trash, we pay for recycling. We are going through a compost pilot program to see if we can have more folks compost and see if that will work. Waste, waste stream, about 25% of, uh, the waste in the waste stream is food waste. Now, we don't know that we'll see a 25% reduction for that area. We're hoping it'll be somewhere in the middle. Um, somebody may, let me ask an extra question. How many of you here have a garbage disposal in Norwood? Just about every hand should be up because it's been a bylaw in the town since the 1950s. Okay, if you don't have a garbage disposal, it means that your site has not been, uh, worked on since prior to, I think, 1957 or so. Or maybe something work was done without a permit. Uh, anyway, getting back to solid waste, 8.8%, 8.4%, 9.2%, 7.688 for recycling. So these costs are going through the roof. This is the, what's that? I'm sorry, those are the annual increases for those parts of that budget. We're not going forward for the next couple of years. Now this total budget takes all of our trash and recycling for all the homes in town. We don't pick up for businesses and we don't pick up from larger apartment complexes either. So Avalon Bay or Upland Woods, those are all required to have their own private trash service. We pick up from most condo complexes, well, not all. The condo complex has needs in the towns. Vendors need to be able to pick it up, but some condo complexes we do pick up from rental units. We'll pick up from them, not the very large complexes, but generally smaller complexes. Some, there are still some private small rental complexes where they just have their own system because it works a little bit better for them. It's included in the tax rate award, which is a good thing. It means you don't pay a separate fee for it. Uh, the challenge is it eats away at the budget and eats away at our ability to fund other services. Uh, Donna, did you have a question?
Yeah, I understood that the condo point was six apartments in buildings, is that still true?
Uh, Mark, is that? Yeah, six. Yep, Carol, a little bit of all.
And so I'm wondering about actual cost per ton. Is recycling the same as a solid waste?
No, it's currently a little bit below. So the last contract we signed, we managed to get a provision in there that recycling costs would not exceed trash costs. And we had to fight hard with waste management to keep that provision in there. And we did keep it in there. Now that doesn't mean that recycling at some point, because it is based on the market, will rise up to a penny below where trash is. But we didn't want to find ourselves in a situation where the recycling cost was higher than the trash cost. It would just end up being a hundred percent, um, trash getting dumped. We have an average recycling contamination rate. But it could always be better. And that's the rate that people just throw stuff in their recycling, uh, that they're not supposed to. And so we can't properly get credited for that rate when they're weighing it, when it ends up being treated as trash. Unfortunately, the more information we put out there with recycling, I always like to tell the story that what I think happens is the proverbial little old lady really scrubs out her pasta jar before putting it in the recycling. And the people that are throwing cat beds and deflated basketballs and stuff into the recycling continue to do it. So that's honestly what the contamination is more than just, you know, a little was left on something. Is that somebody joining or is that a question? Okay. Um, our contract is based on tonnage. It's based on how much trash we actually haul and how much recycle we actually, recycling we actually haul. Right around when COVID started, we saw about a 10 to 12% increase in the amount of trash that we're hauling, largely because people were whole. Now there's an off, uh, an economic benefit that's an offset to that. More people are in town, they're shopping more locally. Instead of buying your lunch in Boston, you're working from home, you're more after buy it from a grocery store or buy it from here. We all know that's caused traffic to go, uh, just everywhere and be completely unpredictable. But as people started returning to work, we saw that drop a little bit, but nothing significant. So the, the bulk of people still working from home and a lot of people who worked in Boston are, did cause a fundamental shift in how much trash we're taking in. If we can truly reduce the amount of trash that we're putting out, there are savings there for the town. That's the goal of the combo pilot program to see is there a way we can actually try to reduce the amount of waste going in because we pay for every ton of trash. Uh, it's crazy as it sounds, you know, if you have a water bottle and you recycle it or you throw in the trash if it's a bottle or a container, you empty it out. Less trash, it's less weight. Um, but again, we pick up trash every week. Waste management's difficult with contracts, but it is otherwise a good, reliable service as much as I wish we could get a better price for it. So as I said, to put that in context, when you look at the different sub areas, the general government budget. Admin services, which is sort of like all of our town hall stuff, up about $140,000. Public safety, which is half the budget, uh, half the general government budget, up about a million dollars. So the trash cost is equal to what we need for either the police department or the fire department in a given year. Public works, if you exclude the trash costs as part of their budget, is only up about $160,000. We've made some reductions in the health and human services, um, line items. And then culture and recreation, which is really just the library and the civic center, some operating reductions there. Again, only an additional $13,000 needed to run those functions this year compared to half a million dollars for trash. Hopefully it'll subside a little bit next year, but it is basically entirely on tonnage. We're going to start going through individual department budgets. Some of these are going to go fairly quickly because a lot of them are smaller offices at town hall that only have three or four staff. So again, if you skip by and you want to ask a question later, by all means, raise your hand, don't think it's your, uh, last chance. Uh, this off, this budget here, 122 covers the selectman's office. The salaries here are not for the selectmen. The selectmen in Norwood serve without compensation. They don't get even a siphon for serving. That's for the, uh, their licensing agent. There used to be two full-time positions in this office. Uh, somebody vacated one and we're just reducing it down to one. This function, the purchasing function, the manager's office, all sort of form one executive office or one administrative office. So we're going to do it a little bit less next year because we had to make some reductions just to get the total budget in line with our revenues. General manager's office, which is my office, the changes in this department are really just step and cola changes. And what that means is most of our employees are on a step scale, union and non-union, where you move up a step generally every year up until you hit a maximum step. And usually there's a cost of living adjustment most years. They range anywhere from one to two to three, depending on where we are in contract cycle. And, um, usually that's what causes the bulk of our increases in any given year is just our contractual obligations to staff. Uh, we had a reclassification request, which is when somebody goes to a personnel board and says, hey, I'm a grade four, but look, the work I'm doing is really grade five work. And that can cause a small increase. Uh, so this covers salaries for all of the staff in that office as well as the operating budget. Are there questions online or a little bit joining? Uh, finance commission, the salary line there is up a little bit. That's just for the, um, the administrative assistant for the ping pong. They have a part-time note taker for their meetings. That's not the ping pong salary. They also do not draw a salary. None of our elected officials do. And then the operating budget for the finance commission is actually just where we book the cost of our annual audit. We, like most cities, like every city in town, we're required to have an annual audit. We're required to have a federal audit. Uh, we do it every year. It just gets booked in the finance commission's budget for, um, it's got to go somewhere, I guess. Reduced a little bit, we're out to contract for a new audit service. And there were a couple of functions that are the past, our new auditors, I should say, there are a couple of functions in the past that we used to pay our auditors to do that staff are now able to do in-house, which has saved us some money. Um, some of the reports that we filed for the state. If you go back about six or seven years, we kind of had a little bit of sloppy accounting system. Uh, anyone who's familiar with government, they're not part of accounting. We practice one balance accounting. We kind of had everything in one fund, this really big kind of messy pot. And, you know, at the end of the year, you kind of tease it out and try to make it all make sense. Totally inadequate, totally the way nobody's done it for probably 40 years. We've spent the last five or six years teasing that out and separating out properly, making sure our utilities are in their own fund. Make sure things are a little bit clearer. So some of those reports that we used to have to pay the auditors to do because it was just a giant pain in the butt, staff in-house are now able to do, save us a little bit of money. Otherwise we'd expect the contract cost to be going up quite a bit. Finance accounting, this is the finance and accounting office, same thing, not a significant change there. Uh, we've reduced some of the operating expenses based on membership dues of different professional groups, uh, that they're a member of. Um, and on the operating budget, it makes it look like there's a decrease, but every year at town meeting, we have what's called unpaid bills, which you'll have. I shouldn't tell you everything now, you'll have to come Wednesday night to learn what that is. But that gets booked to that cost. So sometimes it looks like that cost is going down. It's really not going down. It's different than the final number, not the last year, but I don't want you to think that we saved all that money. It's just allocated to what it should be. Assessors office, we have three full-time staff in the assessors office. Small changes, four steps and colas and longevity, sometimes an employee qualifies for longevity. Therefore, that's something we built into that following budget. We've made some reductions and really tightened down the assessors' operating budget. Um, the assessors are going to do their best to make sure they can come within that. Tim and his team do a really good job of, um, really keeping an eye on their contracted services for appeals and some of the commercial appraisals that they have to do. When they have a, um, an abatement request. So they've done a great job and they continue to do a great job, but we're really starting to tighten up, tighten up some of these operating lines to make sure that we're meeting our overall financial target. Pressures office, up a bit in salaries and down a little bit in operating costs. Um, some step and cola changes and some reclassifications of where staff are in this office. And also as we rebuild those personnel charts from the ground up, we made sure that we were properly budgeting for the proper positions at the proper steps. The operating costs continue to go down a little bit. We, uh, used to use a banking service that Eastern Bank bought about two years ago. And most of our banking fees were no cost. We have millions of dollars sitting in cash, so usually a bank's not charging you too much for that. Eastern Bank, for whatever reason, took over and started charging a fortune. We saw costs go through the roof. We pulled everything out of Eastern Bank and started using different banks. As a result, we've started to see our actual costs go down. One of the somewhat, I won't use the word uncontrollable, but one of the sort of commodity costs in this budget is a line called collection agents. And that really relates mostly to the fire department and the revenue from ambulance service. We generate over $2 million a year from ambulance service. So that fluctuates quite a bit for that billing. We pay a percentage. So if ambulance billing goes up a couple hundred thousand dollars in a year, it's a heavy year. We end up seeing that cost go up, but then it slows back down based on where ambulance costs are out. It's up a little bit. Once there's a new Norwood hospital and there will be, but the day or another, um, those costs will go down. Um, in theory, the revenue will go down, the costs will go down, but it really fluctuates with how much we're billing out for an ambulance run. Town council is our outside legal services. We have a base contract for our town attorney. And then we use specialized counsel in a couple of different areas. We've been trying to catch up to what an actual amount of what we spend will be for town council every year. So we're increasing this each year to try to get to an average. Couple of things we didn't act it, our base contract doesn't count, uh, doesn't cover, uh, litigation, for instance. It covers some research. Um, labor council is billed hourly. So if you have a year where you're doing your contractual negotiations, you're using your labor attorney a little bit more. We generally use our attorneys as a, um, as a check against, uh, our processes, make sure we're following the rules, doing things correctly. Uh, the assessors have some legal fees built into their budget. They use an attorney who's really there for their appeals through the appellate tax board. So it's not really a normal legal service. The assessing office does that. That being said, if you factor in what schools use and what the life department uses, all in, if this number is maybe six or $700,000, that sounds like a big number. But all in all funds, the town budget's about $240 million. So for a corporation of that size, that's actually a pretty small legal department, if you will, but they're not employees. They're all contracted services. There are a handful of towns our size that have a town attorney on staff, but we've always taken the attitude that it's better to, um, let the risk be on another firm for making a mistake that we could then go after. Because if an employee makes a significant mistake in their lawyer, it's not much you could do. You could probably dislodge the employee. But if a law firm gives us bad advice, we can probably go have someone on a law firm sue that. Lawyers love getting sued, just kidding. Um, but it also lets their experience get out there. If we're dealing with a discrimination case or an appeal of a zoning case, we'd rather a firm that has done it 60 times before they have to go do it for Norwood. Then somebody who says, well, I did this for 10 years, but I haven't done it in five, let me give it a shot. So our approach has always been to use outside counsel. Human resources department, there's an increase here. We've added a body to HR. We've moved more and more to having the HR department, really. It used to be just sort of the town's HR department. It's now providing a lot more support to the school department. So what this position does is a couple of things. One, it provides us backup because right now HR at the four staff works really, really well as long as nobody leaves. And then the problem is once one person, if they take a job and HR folks are smart and they know jobs are out there and they know how to move up and they're always advising people on that. When we lose somebody, we have to sort of go into regressive voting, just try to get the paperwork processed and that's all we can do. So having the extra body will allow us to make sure that we don't miss a beat at a couple of the critical times throughout the year. Um, hiring has become a lot more complicated. It used to be you post a job, you get a ton of applications, it's not a problem. We have to do a lot more proactive recruiting now. We are, even when we're trying to offer positions to people a year or two out of college that were, uh, when I was coming out of grad school, I would have killed somebody for. They're not interested, they've got some other offer, they don't want to do it. We have to move quicker when we're hiring professional staff, if it's teachers or firefighters or cops. I could tell you just recently, we went through a police, um, interview process and we had an officer who declined to offer. I could tell you 10 years, seven years ago, five years ago, never would have happened in a million years. But now there's jobs out there, there's opportunities out there. So HR has to be a little bit more aggressive in the hiring process. We have to move through as quickly as we can or we lose people. And sometimes we lose people, operations slow down. There's other costs that come into it. We're also seeing an increase in some, um, workers' comp cases that HR is trying to manage sort of holistically. Workers' comp and you'll see that budget can be a budget buster or it can be a, uh, a budget duster, as I call it, where there's not much going on there. A bad workers' comp claim can cost us three, four, $500,000 or more. But if we're managing the process and managing the problems leading to it ahead of time, we save all that money in the long run. Uh, 20 years ago, we didn't have an HR department. When did it, Anne? All right, I don't have, I don't have Alan here to pick on, is that you's remote? When did we start with HR?
Yeah.
20, 22 years ago. So believe it or not, before that, we didn't even have an HR department for, you know, close to 1,000 employees. Uh, information technology, we've made a couple of changes here based on, um, good work that Sean has done and is going to do with his budget, some software packages that invented. We're always looking to try to trim the budget where we can, but software costs, like everything are increasing. As we know, this latest wave of inflation, it was probably real in one or two sectors. But when people saw groceries going up 10%, they said, well, guess what? Your software for turning lights on and off, we're going to go up 10%. Why? Because we want to. And you can only switch software so much without costing yourself more, um, more money. But, uh, town and school IT are currently separate, but, um, both are relatively small departments overall. The bulk of that operating cost is actually our accounting system that we pay for, uh, annually, which we switched about five years ago. Two lines in the town clerk's office, the left one you see here is the town clerk's actual operating budget. The right one is the elections and registrations budget. Obviously additional staff is going to be needed going into next fiscal year. Mail-in voting has actually increased our costs, it's increased the staff time. Clerk's office can probably continue to get by with the four full-time staff they have, but they are really getting jammed up now a couple of times of the year, just with the additional workflow. For mail-in voting, but the number of elections does add and flow. So they'll eventually get a break. It's a slower year, sorry, Mary Lou. Uh, and also town meeting tends to take a lot of the clerk's office time as well as the fact that the office is open every day for all of the, um, the vitals and registrations functions. But as you can see, it's a relatively small office overall. Community development, which is our planning department, relatively small, um, increase here, some staff realignment. And the operating budget just up a hair. That capital item, uh, the department used to put $10,000 a year into the conservation land fund. They now request that through CPC, so that's been reduced out of the, uh, operating budget. Annual town report, we continue to print fewer and fewer annual town reports. This line used to be up around $6,000 or $7,000. And unfortunately, what would happen is we'd print a whole bunch of them and then town hall and every building in this town will be littered with boxes of whole town reports. So we consciously been even as cost well, we're using the number of physical copies we print. We always maintain a, um, electronic version. We can always print them from town hall if we wanted to, if we needed to, if anyone needed one. But these are the actual bound books that you'll walk in our office and the 2003 town report will have 14 copies on the shelf because we just ended up having, uh, too many of them. General government, this is sort of a catch-all, um, where we have some programs and, uh, those salaries are for some of the, uh, sort of per diem or part-time staff will have at town hall occasionally when we need to bring in somebody to help out in office. We used to sometimes bring in a summer janitor out of that. And then the operating expense, um, we pay for like town meeting out of that. We pay for some of the reports and studies we do, not a significant amount, but if we need to get like an appraisal on a piece of property, that's what ends up coming out of this line. But again, was reduced in, uh, along with the general reductions that we've seen throughout most town departments. So police department, one of our larger budgets, uh, up about $380,000, which is really just covering their contractual expense, uh, contractual obligations. Their department has more than 60 individuals in it. So when you start thinking about what's needed to give a small cost of living adjustment to the 60-plus individuals in the department, that's all calculated here in this cost. You'll notice that their operating costs were actually reduced quite a bit from last year. Had to go through and make reductions in every budget. That reduces their flexibility, it reduces their ability to, uh, put programs on. It sometimes reduces what they're able to purchase if they're purchasing 25 of X a year. They've got to take it back and say, okay, maybe we can only get 20 this year. How do we do it? Which reduces the open level of service to the public, but we had to go through or make some pruning to majority of our departments. Fire department up about $595,000. Uh, again, contractual increases are what are driving the salary cost. You'll notice the operating budget is really only up a teen bit. We couldn't make all those same reductions in the fire department budget. Because everyone knows with the hospital being down, our ambulances are now driving into Boston. We were never set up for an ambulance service that could pick people up and transport them to meet them and North Attleboro in Boston. If that was the case, umpteen years ago, we would have had more firefighters, we would have had more ambulances, we would have had more mechanics. Um, those budget lines would have been much larger for the better part of many decades until the ambulance, until the hospital closed. The ambulance would drive from the station, maybe you need to come here, mile, mile and a quarter, drive to the North Hospital, mile and a quarter and a quarter mile back to the station, that's it. Now they're coming to here or to whoever's home it is and driving to meet them, to Wellesley, to North Attleboro, to Boston. And it's croaking our fleet, it's croaking our, our EMTs who are spending a lot of time in a bus. And then when they get to the hospital, sometimes there isn't a bed available. So they're waiting there, but all that leads to additional costs on vehicle maintenance and fuel. So we couldn't make reductions in those areas, knowing that that would just come back to bite us, um, in the rear. There is an impact of the police department, it's a little bit less mitigated. They're going to, it's a little bit more mitigated. They're going to other hospitals less than the ambulances are going, which is every single time they, um, call out. I think we do 5,200 runs a year last year, chief, are we still on track?
On the ambulance.
Yeah, still on track for this year. So not, not slowing down anytime soon. The building department, uh, this is, uh, Gary Pelletier, our building inspector right there. This is just the staff in the office. Now, there's often a battle between different departments as to who actually brings in the most revenue. I can assure you, it is the building department that I think this year will probably clear $7 or $8 million in permit fees. So not that we look at our departments and say, great job, you've covered your costs, but the building department does cover its costs more than 10 times over. Um, this is just the full-time staff in an adjustment for some of the additional part-time staff hours that are needed. Because we are going through, uh, quite an explosive period of construction between the middle school, that's a global project. Moderna is not slowing down. There was the hospital for a while and there will be the hospital again. Um, those projects alone require some full-time staff just for managing them. Um, Gary, the project like the Coakley, can you estimate ballpark, how many times inspectors are going to be on site on that project?
Probably 300 to 400 inspections. Uh, probably go over 150 myself, so.
And that's that, it's a big project, but that's that one project. And we're not inspecting it any differently than we would a private project. It's not because it's a town project, we do it more or less. That's just what we're statually required to do. So that two-year construction program, prob, uh, project, forget about the meetings, forget about anything else. That's how many times inspectors will physically be on site. There are thousands of pictures and documents and reports that get taken for a project of that size. And we effectively get four of them going on.
Does the Coakley have to pay, um, fees for it?
No, we, we weigh building fees for ourselves. Um, some states you can actually do that where the state pays more portion of the school. So, uh, I used to work for the city of Carroll, Maine, and they had reduced their building fees to just $50 a permit, didn't matter what it was. Well, they did it before the state built the new school. Well, the city of Carroll would have gotten like a million dollar permit fee from the state, but they reduced it, they got $50 permit fee. As much as I'd love to take the money and say, what a great year for free cash, $150 million project would have been a couple million dollars worth of permits. And we would have had an increased fee override and just raise your taxes over here, have the money coming over here. I wish the state would give us something for it. What the state should probably do is give you an allowance based on the side of the fraud, side of the project, to hire some additional inspectors or hire some third-party inspectors to take the pressure off. We have nothing else going on in town, we could probably handle a little bit, I mean, they can handle it well, but we've got quite a few projects going on in town. Uh, emergency management, very small function here in town, uh, nominal increases. We'll probably need to build this up over time. We do not hire a full-time emergency management director. Um, a fair amount of towns our size do particularly further south and west, but we manage with a team approach and we're looking at some unique staffing with public safety to see if we can put a little bit more resources towards it. To make sure we're just prepared and we're rehearsing for a lot of potential disasters that could come. Not that I should be worried about anything, but those of us in the field every night go to bed worrying about what's the next big disaster that's going to happen and how are we going to manage it? And then what we do with things like pandemics is you spend decades playing for it. And then the state just shows it does whatever they want, but that's either here or there. Uh, traffic control, fire alarm and street lighting. Even though we do own our own life department by law, we are still required to pay for streetlights. Not a cost we can shift on to anyone else. Uh, but that cost stays relatively flat. We've not had an electric rate increase in, I think, four years to pandemic economy, it was either two or 27 ago, but it's, I think it's been four years since we've had a, uh, electric rate increase. Uh, traffic control and fire alarms, these are repairs and operating costs for our traffic system as well as the firearm system, but mostly the, um, traffic control, the street lights that you see need repairs, they need maintenance. The life department sort of does it, but it's a contracted service that we usually have to have. I know this budget probably at some point needs to get adjusted because we're going to see some overruns for this year because the main traffic system now pounds failing. It's costing us a lot of money, but there's a capital project that was approved last year to replace that traffic system. Uh, the whole 17, uh, arms long, Washington and Manhattan. We don't want to put too much money into it and we don't want to have to increase the budget cut somewhere else because we know, give it a year and a half or two years, we'll have a new system that will break with the frequency that the current one, uh, seems to like to break at.
And sir, when are they going to stop that project?
Um, Mark, we're still out to bid, right?
We're out to bid this summer.
Okay. So probably the fall or maybe next spring when it, construction actually starts. Uh, we've got the, um, the 1A intersection there at the same time. So we're trying to, how much of that can get done, but that one's also just going to be a traffic nightmare, just not going to drive that way to Westwood. Uh, public works, main budget and, uh, engineering budget. Um, all one department, but we do budget them se- uh, separately. Contractual increases are worth costing the salary, uh, numbers to go up. The operating budget, you know, you'll notice we're trying to keep as trim as we can. We did have to make some reductions in different areas, again, just to get the budget through. Highway maintenance, we did reduce the overall amount of money that we're spending on paving roads. We've worked quite a while to build that number up. We've done great, we've been getting bond authorization from town meeting every year. But again, we did have to make some cuts somewhere. We reduced the overall amount that we're spending on roads. Have a good road budget, so not necessarily exactly where we would like it to be. Uh, is there a question online?
Anne Backwoods.
Yep, Anne, go ahead. Anne, you're, you're muted. All right, tell you what we'll do, um, Anne, do you want to just take your question in the chat? I'll come back to you in just a moment. You can ask about road work or, uh, snow and ice. I'll come back to you in just a moment. You can ask about roadwork or snow and ice. We are, snow and ice is the one area in our budget we are legally allowed deficit spend on. Towns has deficit spent on it for more than 100 years because you really can't predict how a winter is. About six or seven years ago, we were getting really bad with snow and ice. I think we were budgeting like a quarter of a million dollars and averaging $900,000 every year expenses. So we said, okay, this is ridiculous. This is something we've got to fix. And partly 2020 operational override fixed that. And we were able to get the snow and ice money up to a number where it's an average winter. That being said, on the one hand, costs have gone up. On the other hand, we've had a couple of mild winters. So we're still trying to, we can't reduce it or we can't deficit spend on it. And I know that sounds quirky and weird, but what that would mean, and by the way, when we deficit spend, that money comes from somewhere. We don't actually deficit spend. It means you spend more than is appropriate, and you've got to go get the money out of an account somewhere. If for some reason we reduced it and we ran out of money in like February, we have to call a town meeting, have enough money to keep running the roads. That's why you're actually allowed to deficit spend on snow and ice, and you make it up at the end of the year. Sometimes budget, we can just make it all up. We have tried to at least have an average. Jerry?
What has happened with the money last two years?
So anything that's, yeah, anything that doesn't get expended closes out to free cash. So that's what we call the town surplus revenue, and that's subject to appropriation the following year. Good question, though. Hand raiser, same.
It's Anne again, but she's unmuted.
Okay, Anne, did you have a question?
Yeah, I don't think I'm muted. My, my.
We can hear you now.
Okay, basically, I feel the town all the salts and sands compared to other towns. And a lot of times they go out there when we're really not having any major storms. I'd like to see a reduction in the amount of times they go out there.
So one of the things that, thank you for that. One of the things that we do is we pre-treat the roads, which will help snow not stick on the roads. It's about.
I understand.
Yeah, could we save money by not salting as much and not going out as much? Sure, we don't want people to get in accidents. I actually get far more compliments about our roads than we do complaints about the condition of them. Because I can tell you, the minute the DPW misses a street, and they don't do it on purpose, but we rely on a lot of contractors. The day after a storm, it's everyone manning the phone because a new contractor had a new road and you need to do it the exact way that somebody did it last year. And you know, Bowls curve always gets cut this way. And then Mary Lou, the street, they always pay a first night of the street first. They go up there, they went down Nickel Street the other side first. Believe me, it happens. I appreciate that. We try to be as fastidious as we can. I think we take pride in the condition of our roads. The brine is something that really helps us actually save money because that's a lot cheaper than having to go out and salt. And that prevents stuff from sticking. So that's what we tend to do. If you see them out there spraying on the trucks, or you see like those nice like seven lines in a row perfectly on the street, they've gone out and they've brined the roads, so that way there's not as much melt on them. We're usually only blasting the salt as it's coming down, although we can't use salt if it's below 50 degrees or so.
Okay, one other quick question is that the last couple of years, it's gone three feet beyond the sidewalk onto my lawn.
We will have the public works department look at where they're depositing snow for your street and see if they can do something a little bit better than that. That being said, we all do have to deal with snow everywhere, but we'll, we'll see if DPW can look at that. Mark Noddy has had that. He'll take a look and see if he can do that. One year when I worked for the city of Caribou, I did get a complaint about the file putting snow on somebody's driveway, which is just a cost of doing business in New England. We all live here. We have snow. The person did ask me, what right did I have to put the city's snow on their driveway? And I'm going to give you credit, I had never thought about this being the city's snow because it came from the road, so. We still couldn't do anything about it, but we tried. Other questions on highway maintenance and snow and ice? We have Mark Ryan here, our DPW director in town in the year. All right, we can always come back. Waste removal, we've talked about this quite a bit earlier on. This is the portion of the budget that has gone up over half a million dollars for our waste removal costs. We are the first year of a five-year contract. Hopefully next year will be a little bit better, and hopefully we can see some reductions. We're hopeful that this compost program will work enough to justify what we spent on it. If it doesn't, we're going to continue trying to do something to reduce this because these costs are going to continue to eat into the budget. And at some point, trash is going to be, call it 10% of the total general government budget. Question over here?
Yeah, are there any escalators in that contract where you can like fuel those up and like do a big fuel search?
Yep, unfortunately.
How does that work?
So it's, we pay per tonnage. There's a flat rate for the tonnage. And then there's a rate we pay with fuel. It goes up each year. And then there's a clause that we try to get rid of, that if fuel rates exceed a certain amount, we have a right, or they have a right to sit down and negotiate an increase in fuel. They do try to come to cities and towns mid-contract when they're seeing their costs go up and ask for additional money. We always say no to that. We feel that we have a contract for a reason, and they stick it to you on the other end, but just as a matter of principle, we don't see a point in signing a contract for 280 tons for them to come in and say, well, suppose the cops have gone through the roof. Sorry, it's certainly a fault that you're losing money. They stick it to us, but. Other questions on waste removal, recycling? Parks and cemetery maintenance, some increases here. The parks department did have an increase. We had enough in budgeting for a long time injury that had been out of work. And we included a little bit of capital for the mowers, but this is the crew that maintains the cemetery. And our parks maintenance is been reduced a little bit, but DPW takes care of parks maintenance here. The rec department responds to some complaints about playground equipment and other items, but generally if it's the condition of fields, it is the DPW. Overall, the DPW is one area that in the last probably 15 years has taken on more responsibilities and fundamentally has the same staffing level they did 20 years ago. We took over school field maintenance, Mark, when? 2002?
Mid 2000.
Mid 2000, we took over field maintenance with the transition with facilities department. The DPW picked up a little bit more of the grounds responsibility, so we could move a few folks to the facilities department. They do a great job. DPW does a fantastic job. But they're stressed in terms of their overall resources and the amount of, amount they have to do. Questions? Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, as far as the astroturf up at the Coakley, which was the biggest expense line item, have people done research as to the toxicity and the deterioration with a cost benefit analysis compared to just plain old grass? There are a lot of towns that are getting rid of it because of increased injuries, toxicity of the materials, and maintenance.
Yeah, so every time there's a new field that, I mean, that gets looked at, the turf fields that were getting put in 20 years ago are not what gets put in today. So Chris or Mark, do you want to add anything to that?
The new field they just did at high school had the different types of colors to it.
The non-PFAST ones. Yeah, cost of artificial turf on a field has skyrocketed in the last 20 years. We had an estimate for one recently, not the high school, and I think it was three or $4 million. So part of that is the materials that go into them and how they're constructed. Because 20 years ago, it was great to do a turf field, not all that expensive. Now it's millions of dollars to do a turf field because of the material that has to get used and the way they have to get built and the way they have to get designed, unfortunately.
Follow on to that. How much does it cost to replace the astroturf, which I understand does not stand up as long as plain old grass?
What was the high school costing? $700,000 or $800,000?
$700,000, exactly, yeah.
And we'll get, how many years out of it?
Well, we got 11 of the twirney stones, so 10.
What's that?
So 10 as well.
Yeah, so the high school field was about 700, I mean, it was $1,005,000, but that included the track and the lights. About $700,000 or $800,000, we'll be lucky to get 10 years out of it.
What about the toxicity?
I don't think there's a problem with the high school. It's, again, a lot of that's related to PFAS and other chemicals that aren't in newer fields that are being built. That's why that cost tested so much.
Thank you.
She's sitting here asking if you could explain long-term, long-term leave return to work.
Longer, so somebody out on an injury for a couple of years for which the position was not filled. Sometimes people are able to, it's just a long-term medical leave. All right, other questions on cemeteries or parks maintenance? The airport down slightly. This covers the two full-time staff at the airport as well as the operating costs. We made a couple of reductions here. The airport does bring in generally enough revenue to cover its costs. The airport manager, Mark, is here. We manage really the buildings and the grounds and the flat stuff. We don't own the planes, and once a plane takes off, it's the FAA. It's out of our control as to what the planes do or what they're able to do. Questions on the airport? Been around since the late 1940s. Health department, a small reduction here. We have made some budgetary adjustments, but this covers the health and health and human services department. They've been getting a lot of grant funding the last few years, sort of this post-COVID era where grant funding has exploded. They've been using that to great advantage. Other than that, it's Stacy and her team who handle all of our public health inspections, restaurant inspections, health inspections, residential inspections, as well as the variety of public health work that they do and some of the nursing programs that the public health department does. Steve?
Yeah, I know. The St. Catherine's nurse fund, there's a line item in the special town meeting, I believe.
Yeah, so it's been eliminated out of the operating budget, and town meeting can decide if they want to fund it for one more year to sort of give a, an exit time if you want for St. Catherine's. Our budget year doesn't always work out to give organizations a whole lot of notice. We don't make these decisions in October. For years, the town has funded half the cost of the school nurse at St. Catherine's. Owing to it is still sort of, there are north students going there. But I can tell you that is exceedingly rare among cities and towns in Massachusetts to still do that. So with all the reductions, because we're reducing our actual direct services, the decision was made to remove that out of the budget this year. Town meeting will have the option if they want to fund it out of surplus revenue to keep it going one more year.
You mean, that's going to disappear? That line item for the St. Catherine's nurse is going to disappear after this year?
Correct. Well, again, town meeting can fund it if they want for one more year. We could probably continue to fund it one more year after that, but we figured with the reductions that we were making, we're cutting road paving and other items. We're reducing services. And outside agency funding is probably, I think we should continue to, continue to fund it. As I said, most cities and towns in Massachusetts stopped that quite a while ago. Right. Council on Agent, very small increase overall. Nominally increased to vehicles as we're building out our senior medical transport program. Otherwise, this department has a big impact for a relatively small budget. Veteran services, the decrease in veteran services, it appears to be a decrease. We are required under the state to fund a veterans assistance program called Chapter 115, and the state reimburses a 75%. So that line, the main budget in the veterans budget, it just ebbs and flows with what the prior year's expenditures were. So if they're down, we'll reduce it. It's not that we've cut it. It's just trying to average it out with prior years. It is what we call a commodity cost. If we had more folks in town that were eligible for that service and they had to get onto the veterans roles, we have to pay that cost. It's a, it's a statutory requirement. We just increase or decrease the operating budget based on where we were and where we think we're going. I mean, Teddy, our veterans agent does a fantastic job.
You're here.
Library budget, really not much of a significant increase here. Same thing. It's salary increases for steps and colas. We restored a small capital line that had been in the library budget for quite a while. We did reduce the operating budget, so obviously there's somewhat of an offset there, but the library uses that for some of the equipment. As a facility, they have a little bit more equipment than the average building does in town. And we actually have a similar expenditure line of recreation budget. And recreation, some decreases here. Hospool will be offline this summer, which is what caused some of these decreases, as well as looking through the budget and seeing what else we can reduce along with general reductions to the budget. Sometimes you'll notice a salary line going down, and sometimes that's a result of something. In this case, like with Hospool going down. But sometimes we have staff swap out where somebody retires or leaves and somebody comes in at a lower step or a lower salary, or they may not have a certain benefit or a certain degree stipend that somebody else does. So sometimes those numbers will go up and down based on that. Questions on the recreational department? All right, celebrations. This line has gone up. This funds things like Fourth of July parade and our summer concert series. We've, we increased it last year. We're proposing to increase it again this year. A lot of these programs that the town runs are really starting to run into the same cost increases we're seeing everywhere else. Obviously, for under $100,000, we think it's worth it. One of the items, for instance, this year that we increased, we put the porta potties out at the town common that was previously in the rec budget, just because they ate it in their budget. But we've been making reductions everywhere, but to maintain the services, we want to show where that is. The extravaganza is something we do every year, and honestly, these are things where we get some donations, but all the different groups are hitting the same buildings and the same businesses for donations, and they're starting to get tapped out. So to continue to offer some of these services and to increase some of the community services, we've just got to build up this line. We added to the Fourth of July budget last year quite a bit. I think it was the first increase we've had to that budget in probably 10 or 15 years. Questions on the celebrations budget? All right. Always, and I teach you. We're going to go into what we call our shared costs in just a minute. I think I should minimize.
Tony?
Yep.
While you're waiting for that, could you explain the extravaganza and first night celebration?
Sure, so we did a first night celebration once, and there's been a desire to do it again. There's no money to do it again. This would allow us to have a small first night celebration. It was probably the 150th when we did it. The holiday tried again, so that's when Santa comes down and everything else. That event costs more than 10 grand a year, and we just never been able to. We hope and pray we get enough donations, you know, some stuff gets taken out of the operating budget, but then the rec department has to say, okay, well, we run this program, let's hope we get it. The concerts committees are running around every year. They're raising money. Just about all these items have an offset where somebody's trying to raise money for them. Just getting more and more difficult. The fireworks every year is actually privately funded. Roll with Day doesn't really cost us anything. Fourth of July, we will spend about $40,000, and then there's about 20 grand that gets raised on top of that. So most of these events, there's money coming from somewhere else. And you think of like pumpkin float and stuff like that. We want to keep these events free. We don't want to charge 10 bucks for an admission. We try to make sure we're making a little money over here so that these events, someone's meeting, that's going to be free and open to the public. Donna, Jeff, what on set you answered? All right, now, let's see if I don't show this. All right, moving to our shared costs. I know everyone could read this screening in great detail. I promise there's no huge raises in there for everyone. We'll, we'll look at some point when we're doing this. These are just our revenues for a given year, as well as our projection. I pointed out to put up that between free cash and override stabilization, we're using probably north of $4 million to balance the budget this year. That's just to get us through. So that's sort of deficit spending that we have to take money out of other places to get us through. Now, the question, do we have that money? The short answer is yes. Between interest rates being high and building permits being high, we're generating some revenue, but it's one-time revenue. At some point, we won't have all the money from the middle school sitting in the bank, so that interest revenue is going to drop considerably. I hope we continue to get five and $6 million permits. We've had a record of doing quite a few of them in a few years, but we know that we've probably got the last large permit that we're going to get unless another project comes on the horizon. So $8 million this year in building permits will let us do the same thing next year. And next year, I hope we're going to get $8 million in building permits. We do, revenue is a good thing. Gary's going to keep trying to get them, but those come from a large project in town, not just a small one. So in a year where generally you don't want to use your one-time revenue to balance your budget, but on the other hand, the town has generated the money. It is one-time revenue. Most other towns are going through significant cuts. We've been able to get through a little bit easier. I think Matt was telling me Norton's cutting 25 or 30 positions.
They're 29, and they're reducing some of the positions, so.
And Braintree has an $8 million budget deficit, so we're, we're in a moderate financial condition. So we're doing the moderate thing and just keeping going and not going through crazy, but keeping our services going. The other side of that is, sure, would be better to say, no, don't spend that $2 million in free cash, throw it in the bank. But then we're just cutting services, so it's hard to go to the taxpayers or go to you as a legislative body and say, well, we're doing the fiscally responsible thing, but I'm not picking up your trash anymore. What's the point of fiscal responsibility if we're not going to have any services that we have? There'll be a quiz on that slide afterwards. This is where our free cash, which we'll talk about Wednesday, that's just any money left over from the prior year from an unexpended budget line or money that we took in over what we projected. We estimate that we'll do $1 million in building permits. We do $1 million, $100,000. The state certifies it. It's called free cash, and then it's available for appropriation. In the nonprofit world, it's kind of like you're undesigned to get the fund balance, but it's not really in Massachusetts, but we don't need to get into the complexity of that. And then stabilization is our main savings account as a town. It's at a historic high. This is where it'll be at the end of this year. That's a good thing. That being said, when you separate out the utilities, the budget is still 140 million plus. So if you think of a family income of a. Question?
Yeah, I just had a question. You often mention what other cities and towns are doing in their budgets. How do you know better?
I live and breathe this all day long. I, which we talk to my colleagues and go in the meetings and town managers are a bunch of nerds. We're always texting each other. You see what Braintree's doing, you see what this one's doing. Massachusetts Business Ops site's a great place to look at it. I scan the ball. I scan a lot of the local papers. I have the Google thing set up where it's getting a town, it pops up. And I just, I live in the world on a day-to-day basis. I find it interesting. Some people think it's incredibly boring, but yeah. Local article, what Braintree's doing with their budget, to me, it's always exciting. At the same with stabilization, if you think of our income was $140,000, that means we'd only get $9,000 in the bank. So when you look at it like that, all of a sudden, it doesn't seem like as much money as it is. We'd love it to be around 10% of the fund balance. We're happy that we're above 5. It's taken us time to get there. But again, if your income was 140 grand, you get $9,000 in the bank. You're not exactly sitting on a huge pile of money. And once the free cash and that are gone, there's, there's no more money. We don't have giant pools or pockets of money. So it's truly an emergency fund for if we face an actual real emergency, where we were maybe having to make $10 million with a cut, maybe you do take a few million dollars out to just stem the bleeding if you can and help get you through to a better year. But again, it hasn't affected our credit rating. The town is rated just like any other organization out there, for when we have to borrow money for projects. Taking too much money out would likely cause our credit rating possibly to go down. Um, taking too much money out would likely cause our credit rating possibly to go down, we've built up, uh, we're double A-plus. We're solidly double A-plus, but dropping that number would not be looked down favorably on the rating agencies. Tom?
Yeah, uh, how much of the Forbes money is left?
Um, good question, eight million-ish, eight point six million, I think, eight point two. No, that's not included, um, there, that can only be spent on capital projects or land acquisitions. So what Mr. He, what Mr. He was referring to is, um, the town sold a parcel a couple of years ago and netted ten million dollars profit. We wanted to put the money into the bank in a couple of different ways, and we thought we convinced the state that it was okay to do. And the state said, no, we're on to your game, you can only spend money from sale of property on other capital or other sale of property. The reason that law exists is twofold, one, it's so that a town doesn't just sell off an asset to balance its budget, uh, pay off a contract or something like that, where they say, oh, get rid of our, our senior center, our recreation center, who's had a hard budget year and break, we're going to balance the budget. It's really a fiscal stability measure. The other reason it's that way is nobody actually sells property, that kind of a, a huge surplus with nothing there. Sometimes a town will say, hey, we finally decided to dispose of an old elementary school property, and you know, but we're going to upgrade this elementary school over here, it's exceedingly rare that a town sells a piece of property within three years of buying it for a nine million dollar project, uh, nine million dollar profit. Probably on paper, the greatest real estate deal in the history of municipal government. However, I still remind people, it was still not a good idea to buy Forbes to begin with. Well, just because it worked out, I think the analogy I use is if you drive home drunk and you stay, get home safely, it was still a bad idea to do it, so. We should not buy huge properties on spec and already rock that guy, even though it worked out for us in this case. Uh, just running through a couple of our large share costs, I'm going to turn over the schools in just a minute. This is the town's debt service, so this is money we borrowed for projects, this includes the middle school, the high school, and any money we borrowed in the operating budget for large projects. Uh, regional schools, this is what we pay for Norfolk Aggie and Blue Hills, not part of the, uh, your public schools budget, but there's our additional education costs that we face. They're largely, uh, student dependent, so a couple of kids difference at either school can make a big difference. I think our, um, Norfolk Aggie's up like three students, so that's three tuitions that go up, there's less than ten kids, I think they're all together. Blue Hills, we're flat this year with our number of students, but your ratio can still change between and among the town in the Blue Hills region. So it can be very frustrating sometimes where that number, you know, we think it's going to go down, but it actually goes up because, you know, we were flat, Braintree was down ten students to twenty students, so therefore we, um, although, Braintree's cost is probably going to go up at the rate they're going. Um, but that's a Blue Hills cost.
So why does the Aggie go up? That looks like it's doubled.
Uh, yeah, basically the number of students there almost doubled, I think it went from four to seven. So, nobody go to the Aggie, it costs a lot.
Do we pay, is that the town pays?
The town pays, yep. Uh, retirement pension contribution, this is for, uh, a few school department administrative staff, but mostly town, uh, staff. This is the state's pension system, it's the same pension system for the state in every city and town in the Commonwealth, it works the same. Municipal employees don't pay into social security, they pay, um, into the, uh, retirement system, they pay eleven percent. The town pays an actuary, a little determined amount to do that, uh, to match that, there's really nobody, uh, I don't think anyone left on the five percent system, I think we're all in the eleven percent. Um, Bernie, if anyone knows Bernie Cooper was on the, um, Bernie started with us in the late seventies and was still on the, um, I think five percent, oh, the chief's giving me a look, he may be on five percent, so I shouldn't say that. Um, and then the state pension system actually predated social security, so that's how long it's been around, we're about eighty percent funded, which is, uh, pretty good. And that's not something we can negotiate, we don't have any control over it. Uh, workers' comp, this is our annual workers' comp budget, it, uh, covers most of our employees. Public safety employees are actually not covered by workers' comp, there's a separate statutory law, so I mean, most of those costs will actually come out of that department's operating budget. Um, they get paid a different amount and it's not taxed, it's just a separate statutory, uh, legal framework for some reason, but this covers our workers' comp policy, we are self-insured, and it covers most of our costs in a given year. This is one of those budget lines that, um, we're probably okay funded, we can always use some more money. Um, in it, uh, mainly because it's hard to project year-to-year when a workers' comp case will actually settle. Um, somebody might injure themselves, there's ongoing costs, we certainly can't project that, we run on a hard fiscal year. Um, somebody falls and, and doctor, where they break their leg on June twenty-seventh, and then they're going to have a surgery until the following year, and there may be a follow-up, so workers' comp can be a little difficult, we've moved you over to the HR department to try to be a little bit more proactive about looking at where we're seeing injuries in particular departments and seeing how more aggressive we can be at trying to reduce some of these costs. Uh, this is our health insurance line, which we averaged, um, uh, which we discussed before, about a ten percent increase in premiums. So it's a significant cost factor, we're contributors to Medicare, just like any other organization, this is the town's share of, uh, Medicare. This capital equipment line is for, uh, our regular fleet vehicles, we've increased it, um, given with the, uh, increase in inflation, this just is a regular replacement of police cruisers, uh, fire admin vehicle, the DPW fleet, as well as school transportation, uh, vans, we just need to replace a certain amount of gear to keep our fleet averaging a certain age and keep vehicles in good condition. This is actually one of the wins in the budget for the last five or six years, we used to fund all of this with free cash. So at the end of the year, you find out how much money you have left, and then the following year, you'd say, great, we got to buy vehicles with them, we got to do this, we got to do this. So it's kind of like if you look at your checking account, you say, great, after I paid my bills, I got, you know, three hundred dollars left and I can go spend it, except you have bills you haven't paid yet. So by working into the budget, we have a little bit more flexibility with our free cash, um, when we have it at the end of the year. And this is just our general liability insurance, I think, uh, most of you know, we own a lot of buildings, this building alone, I think, uh, our policy has insured from three hundred million dollars. Um, because obviously a significant loss here would be difficult, we own, have replacement costs, geez, probably six, seven, eight hundred million dollars worth of property, and then there's the liability of all the different business lines that we have. Students, police, fire, public works, water, sewer, electricity, everything else. And this is just our reserve fund, the, uh, general town budget has a reserve fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, where if there's a cost overrun during the year or something comes up, we'll go to the finance commission and say, look, if we get a transfer from the reserve fund, we, uh, we had an unexpected expense in this area or that area. We've reduced it a little bit, we used to have, um, more facilities related ones, something would break, but we built the facilities department about four years ago, and they're able to handle a lot more of those small to medium items, whereas if something broke at the civic and it was a twelve thousand dollar repair, that's actually quite a significant hit to their budget. And this is our facilities budget, as I said, we combined facilities several years ago, um, really not much of a change, um, some commodity cost increases and then, um, estimated contractual increases. Facilities has been largely flat since we built it about four years ago, we had a small school facilities department and a decentralized system with some staff and vendors on the town side, we combined it together, Paul O'Parry's the director of facilities. Couldn't be here tonight, but Chris Wallen, who's the deputy director, is here, and they've been doing a fantastic job since we combined facilities. On the horizon, uh, we are looking at the implementation of our master plan over the next couple of years, that will likely require funding for some new initiatives that will come out of that. Um, the Coakley Middle School is going to need some staffing, we're going to do a facility staffing, we're going to look at school staffing, as there's some changes there, the fifth grade is moving up to the Coakley, but it's going to be a larger building. You can't necessarily just cut staff elsewhere, most of our elementary schools have two custodians, you have a day and evening. So even if the Callahan all of a sudden doesn't have the fifth grade, they still need that evening custodian, so there'll be some costs there. It'll also take, I guess, a little bit, there's always a year or two shakeout with those budgets. Even though it's an existing middle school, we're going to open a brand-new school building in a little over a year, and it's going to take a year or two to really shake that budget out and figure out what we want to do and how we're operating, and what works and what doesn't work, so always a challenge. We have some capital it needs, um, the town hall at some point is going to have to get addressed. It's beautiful, it is aging gracefully, there's a breaking on a regular basis. Um, it has never had a major renovation since it was built in nineteen twenty-eight. So if we were to say, well, let's finally fix the heating system, once we start peeling that onion back, um, there's a lot of other things that are going to have to get done, so that'll be a large project at some point in the next few years that we're going to have to really sit down to figure out how to pay and how we relocate offices. Um, just an example, if you ever see these little knobs that are capped in the hall, in the walls at Town Hall, those are the original oil lamps. Um, uh, sorry, gas lamps, and they just cut the gas cap of them, I don't know, seven years ago, whatever it was, and continue to go on, so the building's never really been brought down to, um, to its size, it's in fair shape. Um, but at some point, we'll need to look at it, the downtown streetscapes are starting to age a bit. That's sort of our sidewalks that are bump out from the downtown area, do we need to fix them next year? No, but at some point, we're going to start thinking that those projects tend to come up every twenty to thirty years, and the grant funding, we got to do it, I think, Mark, maybe twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Um, early, early two thousand, I still think the nineties were ten years ago, so sometimes I'll go a little off. But, um, that type of grant funding isn't necessarily there anymore, but at some point, that's going to need to get refreshed in the next five to seven, maybe ten years, but it's stretching, otherwise towns look, um, like, and obviously the selectmen are looking at, as well as some other committees, how to address the enormous backlog we have in stormwater infrastructure. But on the positive side, Modernist growth continues, uh, FM Global is building their half a billion dollar facility. That will be a nice tax, uh, revenue bump that we'll get to the year that that comes up. And then eventually, I'm convinced, there will be a new Golden Hospital, and, um, it'll be positive one way or the other, whether it's privately owned or nonprofit, I think we could all agree, as long as it's anyone but steward, we'd be in good shape. Um, and there might be some additional revenue enhancement opportunities that the state is looking at, um, for some of the taxes that tend to impact people coming into town more than others, although, um, the legislature seems to be waning on really being issued in those, but that'll be after that. So, and I'd once again screw up the screen, oh, there we go. Before we go to the school department, watch, any questions? You can ask again Wednesday night, Thursday night, at town meeting, or anytime between, you can email the manager's office, managers@norwoodma.com.
It's more of an observation.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, I just went to the bottom line and grand total in the book. And so the increase, uh, based on the request of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, is approaching seven percent.
And all in, right?
All in, yeah, right. Inflation rate for the last two years has been about three and a half to four percent. There's a little disconnect to me on those two numbers, and my concern is, at seven percent a year, in ten years, the request will be three hundred and sixty million dollars, not a hundred and eighty. So, help me understand that, or maybe it's an oversimplification.
No, I, it's, it's both, it's a little bit of both. So in a given year, where let's say we're giving salary increases of, let's call it three, three or four percent, all in, everything that gets in. You have that, but then the operating portion of the budget is growing, and as you've seen, some of the costs are growing far greater than inflation. Trash is an example, up twenty-two percent this year, you'll see in the school department budget, there's some contractual costs, not just sat salaries, they're just going up far above two to three percent. One of the things we do in our budget, so if you have an employee who's at the top step, and then the next year, they retire and you get somebody else in, you bring them into the bottom step, and that's great. But we don't budget for that top step, what we do right away is call the higher down, we budget at the bottom step. If we budgeted for all of our staff at the top step, then a three, three and a half percent increase all in would truly be a three and a half percent increase. Sometimes what it ends up being is you have a SEP and you have a cost of living adjustment, so those budgets can go up potentially five percent, six percent a year, and then what happens is one year, nobody notices when, hey, the assessors office only went up one and a half percent. That's great, and then we skip by it because the money ends up going somewhere else. There's not a town in Massachusetts that, um, fundamentally can live under Prop two and a half, you're always sort of Robin Peterson, Paul. Um, the last time I worked in, going back about ten years, I had to cut probably fifteen or twenty percent of the municipal staff. That budget since then to now, which is putting it at, it still grows at about three percent a year, and that's with layoffs almost every single year. So, I, just real quick, health insurance is an example, seventeen million dollar budget went up ten percent. Now, that budget's usually going up around five or six, but that's something that's a budget buster, that makes all the rest of the department operating budget difficult to come in with just a couple percent.
So it is the reality, in ten years, the budget will be over three hundred million dollars.
Possibly. And just as if you go back ten or twenty years ago and look at what it was and look at before that, and look at where it was in the nineties and the eighties and the seventies and the sixties, go back and look at the town reports of what we spent in the, in the twenties and the thirties, towns have always been relatively large in terms of their overall scope, and Prop two and a half, when it came out in the early eighties, was originally supposed to be a maximum tax increase, and at the last minute, they threw in the annual tax increase to prevent the town from going all the way up. Tax rates prior to Prop two and a half were in the thirties and forties, that's why it came in, that they were ridiculous. This town in the early eighties slashed the budget, knowing that they wanted to bring that tax levy down, we're cutting quite a few things to set it as low as they could, knowing it wouldn't grow beyond a certain level.
Someone could expect their taxes to double in ten years?
Not necessarily, and it's a little bit of a complicated question, because we have a tax levy, and it gets split between the residential and the commercial properties. Commercial properties pay about double the rate that residents do. Taxes can go up because your values can go up, not related to spending. If this year's budget, if the FY twenty-five budget was zero dollars above the FY twenty-four, it is still possible for your tax bill to go up if the residential values have increased in proportion to the commercial values. So that tax levy, let's call it a hundred and twenty million dollars, that's how much money is coming out of the tax base of hometown services. That stays the same, you pay about sixty percent, commercial properties pay forty, residential properties have been gaining value like crazy in Norwood. If that continues, that bill is going to go up, because the portion that commercial tax base is paying is going to shrink just by, um, by size.
But your costs won't, won't be going up. Your costs, I don't know, based on the same, uh, same fundamentals, right? This, the assessed value of your home keeps going up.
Right.
It's independent of what the costs are on the path.
Correct, the value, the value goes up, the tax levy doesn't necessarily go up, uh, the tax levy goes up, your values can increase, and it doesn't mean the town's getting more money. Does that make sense?
No. It's just this seven percent year increase, it's scary.
Sure. Believe me, I, we're, we used to be about two hundred million dollars all in, and, uh, that was with the life department and everything else, and it to ten, to twenty, to thirty, to the whole number, is growing and growing and growing. The life department's on it, so it's only at that same rate, but.
Just an observation.
Yeah, and it's, it's an accurate one. Uh, Tom?
Yeah, um, I just want to defend, um, the, uh, costs, because we're talking about three percent inflation on top of eighteen percent over the previous years, and you guys didn't collect eighteen percent more tax.
Yeah.
So I mean, the inflation is insane, it may, it seems small now, three percent, but again, that's on top of seventeen, eighteen percent for the previous three years.
Right, and most, absolutely, most municipal economies are sort of, uh, mainly because of how we contract, we're usually a couple of years behind the general economy. So all of a sudden, those grocery prices go up at the grocery store, no impact on town costs. Give it a couple of years, we have to re-sign contracts, and that really great fuel rate that we had while everyone's getting rate goes through the roof, and understandably, the vendors end up begging us for it, saying, well, we, we were giving you fuel that we were buying for three bucks and charging you two fifty, because that's what your contract was, tough crap, now you're going to pay four.
You mentioned in your cover letter, something about we could face an override, school twenty-six?
We have enough money for next year, and then after that, we're going to be facing a gap, but I don't know that we'll have the revenue to close. So that's, the decision point is going to be, do we raise taxes or do we cut services? And when we say cut services, that means, it means jobs, it means bonds, that's where, where our money is. But I'd rather be out there and be honest with everyone than, than not. Uh, other questions before we go on to the school budget? All right, Matt, I promise you won't be as long as me, you, uh, you JJ do.
I get it, all good.
It's all you, so thank you.
Um, we've got Matt Wells, acting assistant superintendent, uh, for the schools, uh, first of note, we did produce a budget book this year. Um, you all have a copy of it, um, kept it very simple, uh, we do have some transition, obviously, with, with tackling former positions, we have a new superintendent coming on board on July first, uh, we're going to definitely have a new business manager as well. So we want to make something that was simple, get the information out to you, and then let these new people come in and create a budget book to update that, so. Um, moving on.
The other one?
There we go. Cover that. All right, the school budget, uh, so the school budget this year, uh, sixty-one million, two hundred and eleven thousand and three dollars, a seven point nine nine percent increase. Um, before we talk about this, we have to kind of talk about the base that we started with in FY twenty-four. So the FY twenty-four budget, remember, was fifty-four million, eight twenty-four, eight eight four. Uh, we have one point four million, almost one point five million from the override stabilization funds, twenty-two million from transportation funds, and three hundred and fifty thousand from the Medicaid funds, all of this was rolled into a single budget of fifty-six, six eighty-four, five two seven. That's our start point that we use to build off onto our FY twenty-five budget. Uh, so here we have, um, the general education again is still about, uh, sixty percent of the budget. Special education is about thirty-six percent, and about four percent was with our English language learners. If I can just get the right arrow. Um, to reach a seven point nine nine percent budget, we had some reductions that we had to go through. So we took right off the top, about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars came out of the budget. Hundred fifty thousand that we had built in for tuition contingency that was never going to survive the budget anyway. Um, we did blanket reductions to supplies and professional development. Uh, substitutes was tracking a little bit lower than what our budget was, so we, we took that as a, a reduction as well. Uh, we had, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars with the iPads that we're going to add to the iPad program, we've reduced that out of the budget. And then the two largest pieces that we reduced was a reorganization within central office, which removed about one point four nine FTE from central office, saving hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, and then our higher down savings of four hundred thousand dollars. The higher down savings, um, we have about sixteen retirements this year. And one of the plans that we have going forward is, as we replace those positions, we're targeting hiring, uh, employees into those open positions that are making less than sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, we're not going to be able to fill every position at that price, but if we can average out around sixty-five thousand, we know that we're going to take in that four hundred thousand dollars with the savings and be able to reduce our budget.
Question?
Yes.
Those iPads, um, Apple iPads, are religious?
They were Apple iPads, they were, uh, an addition to the program that we were currently running, um, and therefore we decided not to add to the program. Um, so the budget, um.
I actually have a question.
You have a question?
Hi, Ian. The I, the, the computer equipment that the kids use, the Chromebooks, et cetera. Um, were those given to them during the pandemic, and are they continued to give them those Chromebooks for free from? to give them those Chromebooks for free from the town?
Yeah, so the one-to-one program, uh Chromebooks and iPads is sponsored through the budget. Um, these are provided as curriculum materials to the to the students. And they use those those um Chromebooks and iPads to uh as part of the one-to-one program.
I I understand that, and I am a substitute teacher, and I see extensive abuse all the time of these Chromebooks. Is there a limit to when a student has partially destroyed a Chromebook whereby the parent has to pay for the damage?
So I've been in Norwood since December, and I cannot answer that question. Uh, I can tell you industry standard is that um I've always gone after, if there is a clear sign of abuse and not um accidental damage, um, we would go after the parent, but I would have to defer to Dr. Muniz on that answer.
Yeah, as far as I know right now, we do not actually go after the parent. I have not been as far as acting as acting superintendent and assistant superintendent the whole year. I have not been privy to any information that we have had a student purposely damage something where we had to go after a parent for that. We do have some contingencies. Our technology team does a phenomenal job of refurbishing Chromebooks. So when something gets damaged, you go back to our technology office. They take the parts apart, they refurbish it. Sometimes we have things under warranty, so therefore it's actually a free cop support.
Okay, I understand all of that, but I also come from the computer world. And basically, um, kids will trace and take pens and pencils and mark on the screen. When you destroy the pixels on the screen and it starts to bleed, you have to throw that device out. There is no repair for screen bleed. I've seen kids pick up the frames around the computers and lift them off, et cetera. Norwood is probably no different than any of the other eight schools that I have subbed in. What I'm asking is, is there going to be an instituted policy to take care of these things when IT can no longer uh supply chargers because the kids take the charges home and don't return them? Or there aren't enough spares for the kids to even function in a classroom because so many of them are inoperable? What kind of policies and procedures are you putting in place for the technology to be maintained?
So I think as far as policy goes, we would have to review that a little bit more with our school committee. Um, these are not conversations that I've been having with our tech director. Um, and if there was this type of abuse that was occurring within our 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 schools, this would have been something that would have been a conversation that I would have been privy to as soon as I came on board here. And I have not had these conversations, nor am I hearing of this kind of damage from within our school district, I'm sure.
Have you elicited that information from the IT people? I would be shocked to death if the kids in Norwood treat these Chromebooks better than uh the surrounding towns.
I think every child, the children are children, right? They're going to do children's activities.
But they need to be held accountable.
Actually, me with the IT, yeah, I I meet the IT director on a weekly basis. Ask updates. And he always comes to me with budget concerns that for whatever budget needs are happening. This has not been on my radar from him. So it may, it may have happened, and you may have witnessed it. But it hasn't been extensive enough for him to raise concerns with us to say, we got a problem here, what should we do differently? But I will probably back up with him and seeing if if we need to look into that further.
Ask him how many charges have disappeared.
Matt, we have a question online from Douglas Cohn, who asks if there's a reason why there's a mix of both Apple and Android devices, or Apple is used at the younger grades?
Yeah, so the Apple are used at the younger grades. Um, it's much more manipulative for them, easier to to work with. Um, and then once we get into the older grades, we use the Chromebooks where they're they're much more adept with their fingers and able to use the keyboards. Okay, uh, where was I? Uh, we are on to a budget offsets. Um, so similar offsets to what we've seen in years past, uh with some uh changes in some of the numbers. So uh school bus fees, we we have seen larger offsets utilized from school bus fees in the past. Hundred fifty thousand is more in line with what we're actually seeing for revenues that are incoming. So busing is not um, we should charge a fee for it, but not all students have to pay the fee. Obviously, that there's um, uh, if they're over a certain, over six, two miles, uh, in K to six, there's no fee associated with that. Uh, preschool tuition is in line with what we've seen in the past. Athletic fees also in line with what we've used in the past, but we're keeping a close eye on that. Again, that's another situation where, you know, we, the the fee collection is based on whether um they they actually qualify for the fee. Uh, music and drama as well are 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 kept flat. Um, I believe we're going to be looking at those a little bit closer um over the next couple of months, just to make sure that um we're comfortable with those numbers. Uh, Fed Stabilization Fund, we had actually budgeted to use five hundred fifty thousand dollars in this year from the Fed Stabilization Fund. Uh, we've been able to, uh, we have a budget freeze in place. We've been able to uh reorganize our funds that we have, use higher down savings. And you don't believe that we're going to need to use that five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, in addition, we are expecting some extraordinary relief to come in, which must be spent in this year. That's Circuit Breaker extraordinary relief, which is a special program that gives you money when your special education cost has risen above twenty-five percent of the previous year's budget. Um, so that's going to allow us to be able to carry those funds over and use them next year to help offset our budget. And then, of course, with Circuit Breaker, we are using about a million dollars more than what we did in this current fiscal year. Uh, so obviously, this is not a sustainable path that we're heading on to the Circuit Breaker. Um, we're using uh all of our carryover, plus we're going to be using a a good chunk of next year's receipts as well uh to support that. Wrong, nope, wrong way again. All right, um, so these, again, this is revolving funds, just to show you um FY twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five of how these these funds actually are funded, money is flowing in, what we're using for the budget, what our projected our receipts are for those items as well. Um, our grants, uh, we don't find out about grants until August, September, sometimes late October, when we find out what those balances are. Um, grants are lower now, so uh we're we're carrying over about this, uh, we're anticipating about the same as what we received this year. The COVID-era stimulus funds are, they're ending. Uh, we have S R three, which is the last of those funds. Um, we are expecting to use some of those funds to support some of our summer programs this summer. And then by August, we're anticipating that those funds are all going to be spent, and we're done with that. They have to be spent no later than December. But I, we don't want to push out till December and risk losing that money if we don't spend it properly. So we're using it for our summer programs this year. Again, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars for our summer programs that we're using from the S R funds. So that will be another issue that we have to kind of talk about in FY twenty-six. Um, and there are also a couple of priorities that we were not able to handle within this budget. Uh, we had, uh, the school committee had talked about adding two positions this year for the new middle school of all the positions that we need to add there. We were not able to get those into the budget. Um, our principals have been asking for a number of years for behavior specialists to come into the classroom and help with specific behavioral issues that are going on in those classrooms. Uh, again, those are five FTE that we had been asked for. We were not able to get those into this budget. Um, so those are kind of some critical priorities that we were not able to get into here. There were others that were a little bit easier to say, well, we're just going to have to learn how to work without that. But these are kind of critical items that we wanted to add in. So any questions?
Uh, really quick before we go, any questions? What was your name that asked the question about the Chromebooks?
Anne.
Anne, I don't know if you're still listening on with this, Anne, but um I stick with the information right now, and we charge parents for kids for six through twelve. So if kids sixth grade, six through twelve damaged Chromebooks, we will invoice parents on things that are not covered by our insurance or warranty.
Thank you.
I like to chase them all. Um, but, you know.
I don't know, I don't know why we don't make them buy their own Chromebooks.
Same reason kids didn't buy their own textbooks for the last hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, I I understand that, but I've just seen over the last eight years unbelievable abuse of this equipment.
Yeah, it's considered a curriculum material, and you know, you can't be charged for that. So, uh, if you had a question, sir?
Uh, what percentage of the budget is unfunded state departments?
Uh, yeah. So, I mean, the the funding that we get from the state is uh with about seventeen million dollars that we receive from chapter seventy funds. So, you know, we're talking about sixty-one million dollar budget, so the balance of it is unfunded.
Right, so how much of the sixty-one is what's the, what's the bigger enough, is that there?
The, what's the lot, like, what's really driving us?
Well, given a seventeen, out of the sixty-one, what percentage of that is their requirements on us?
Well, I I mean, all of it, all of it is requirement. I mean, it's um, you know, we're we're you know, we're required to provide special education services, required to, you know, the the students are entitled to a free uh uh public education. Um, and that is the the largest of the unfund mandates. We have to provide that to the students, so.
So, sorry, Tommy. But uh, are we going to invite our state rep and state senator to our town meetings so they can help us fund it on our budget?
So I know that the school committee in particular, and it's like when they stay in regular contact with Representative Rogers and Senator Rush, I think one of the challenges is that the state, on the one hand, the last six years has we've done well with state funding for the school system the last couple of years. Two years ago, we got a huge increase, and we sort of just didn't say anything about it because we sort of took it. Um, to Matt's point, the whole system is unfunded. We do, we provide education as the state requires us to provide an education. I think they're going to advocate for the best they can.
Are we going to invite them to our our meeting? So we can ask them, what are they going to do to help fund our situation?
Representative Rogers is usually there, we can.
Oh, you suggested at their, at their meeting that it's unsustainable to take that. So if they can continue to pass laws, regulations for then they need to step up and fund us more and specifically on a regular basis. And if we don't, we're going to put that on you guys. We want them to come and fix us from the aspect of let's step up, let's pass a law for the three years supplement. This may be certainly, as we saw, we just spent two billion dollars in the state for another emergency. Uh, and so, you know, if you invite that by the town, it's just a simple number for any third town, that's almost six million dollars per town, right? So, so my question is, are we going to invite them to our town meeting?
We certainly can. At the town meeting, remember, you can email them and ask them to come. Uh, the moderator can ask them to come. I can tell you from a practical standpoint, there are two representatives out of the two hundred and fifty, and there's not a town in Massachusetts that's not asking the state for more money for education, for general government services, the state colleges, the state universities. The governor has pulled money out of thin air for a the shelter crisis, a billion dollars a year. Um, state taxes are down from where they were a few years ago. Um, I I think they are supportive. Uh, I don't expect.
Certainly myself or anyone else, invite them to your town.
Absolutely. You're an elected official just like they are. And I think if they hear from enough folks, they may be more willing to um to want to come. But I know that they they answer the phone when I call them. The reality is they're two of three hundred legislators.
Absolutely.
So.
And to 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 jump on that, all of our 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 organizations, M A S S, M A C, Madville, we are constantly lobbying for the same exact thing that you're asking. Please, you've got to fix these forms. You've got to fund us better when you're funding not just schools, but funding the municipalities as well. So it it it's a whole thing. I mean, we, you you can't, you can't find one and not.
We're going to try to do this way behind, way behind you guys to say, hey, listen, you know, it's not just the folks who are working for speeding buckets. It's like we need more help from them. After they declare state murders for 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 those items, wait, then you can declare it to the schools.
The murder, I will say, is that they don't hear from the city of Rockton? Rockton, Rockton. So Rockton is the reason we get the state aid that we get. Back in the nineties, it was Rockton that actually sued the Commonwealth, stating that you are, we are constitutionally required to provide an education, and the state is not getting its money to do it. That led to Ed reform in the nineties, which led to most of the money that we get today. And it was actually the last six years, the state, uh, for the last six years, they've been increasing money for specialized like this, you know, we've done well because Rockton again was making noise about suing the state, saying, here again, this is the problem that you've done. Um, so kudos to the city of Rockton, that I know they have their challenges. I grew up nearby, but it's that level of action has seen the the state as an entity actually step up and make changes.
I do also want to mention that, you know, but we we are in regular contact with the special.
Uh, the Emery was all the chair of the.
Sorry, I'm here at school today. We are in regular contact with our representative. And as a matter of fact, I do know that he has um supported co-sponsor and several bills that now to get some of the funding provided to, you know, especially his gestures. Um, but so it it's not, you know, of course, it's it's the state legislature. They, you know, they have to get everybody to support it, and then it's got to go through the balance, so it's got to go through all the different budget cycles. So I I think that the support is there. Uh, and of course, every school committee meeting we have, we talk about legislation that and see and and uh Teresa Stewart has been writing with us tonight. She pushes it really hard. Please do, you know, write those letters and put some weight behind it because you're absolutely right. There's a lot of things that we are required, special education, um, certain, you know, health mandates and things like that that are that they put on us that we have fun, we have to.
In law or for testing just a factory regulation without thinking about the cost. So what I want to make sure is that they understand that when you just do these things, there's a cost to everything they did. So it's so it's like, hey, listen, then you're going to have to do something different when it comes to the taxes specifically for us.
Thank you.
Those who do five behavioral staff positions, are they new staff positions or the addition, as well, the additional staff?
They would have been, if we could have gotten them into the budget, they would have been new positions that were brought in for a specific purpose. I would, we were not able to add them into our budget.
Those non-staff now, they need to.
We have, uh, we have BCBAs, which are behavioral analysts. Um, but they're not, uh, they're not, they do analytics, they collect data, do the analytics from it. These would have been specific positions that were within that classrooms. Um, we're looking at those behaviors and and making modifications to help the teacher um with the specialization that they have. So much more on the, on the, you know, in the trenches.
We actually have, do have one that's shared across the five elementary schools, and they kind of consult with the kindergarten school if they will it. And she does some really good work and some positive things, and we're, and so because she's been semi-successful, I say semi because she spreads self in, they're like, well, if we had one per school, then we probably make some more gains, and then we wouldn't have to have students going from tier one to tier two to tier three behaviors, where sometimes, sometimes they have emotional, social, emotional disabilities. And then we got to send them out of the district for tuition, and then we're paying more money. So we were trying to be more proactive and saying, well, if we give them the support they need earlier, then maybe we can give them that support they need within their school, they stay in our schools, and then we no longer have to pay those out of the tuition.
Well, I know it's on the um, this will be twenty-five budget offsets, there's a line item near about five hundred thousand dollars on warrant article, special, contract services.
The FY twenty-four, the five hundred thousand dollars for the special.
Right.
Yeah, that was, that was last year's warrant article. Um, so that's, that's the FY twenty-four column.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that is money that was given to the to the schools specifically because um buses and vans, um, the supply chain was just horrendous. We were not going to we were not getting our vehicles delivered to us. Actually, it turns out that Amazon was taking everybody's vans and trucks. So kind of interesting, yeah, they 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 go to the highest seller, I guess. Um, so we were falling to, you know, way to the bottom uh um as far as where we were in the queue. So we weren't going to get, we actually didn't get um our final buses on the road until the end of March, um, when we finally received them, got them on the road. So that money was there to help us with the increased costs that we anticipated with contracted services and simply making our staff work double time to get everyone moved wherever they need to be moved. So we, of that five hundred thousand, I'm anticipating it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand that we needed to support during those nine months um where we didn't have our vehicles. So I'm anticipating returning about two hundred and twenty-five thousand back. Oh, sure. Um, and we have a hand raise online?
Um, I had to take a necessary break, and I don't know if this was a line item that was in the budget. But I know that I have read in a paper that there is a concern about English language learners and increases um of fifteen percent to accommodate that. Um, how much more of an increase is that going to be with the influx of immigrants that have come in here that don't speak the language?
Sure. So as far as the the migrants or immigrants that have come in, that maybe that were staying um somewhere on Route One, it was maybe about thirty students total. It wasn't actually a lot of students. We do every year have an increase of our English language learners that come into the district. But at this time, we haven't had a big enough number of increases to say we need more staff to actually service those students. Um, our E L E director does a great job of making sure that staff are moved around to the different schools so we can have appropriate numbers per staff. Uh, and so we keep on utilizing those numbers, but right now she did not request additional staff for the current numbers that we currently have in our schools. Uh, that could change a year from now. We may be needing an additional teacher or a craft professional of some sort, but as of now, we don't have that required in the budget as an additional app.
Out of curiosity, how many different languages are we supporting in the town right now?
I would say it's over thirty. I have that number on my phone. I want to pull it up while 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 Matt talks.
Yeah, so just to add on to that, too, like, we we're seeing two, there's two types of migrate migrants that we're talking about. So the international migrants are the ones that are probably, you know, the most political, the most that have been, you know, in the news. Um, we, again, we only saw about thirty students that came from that. But you also have a wonderful town here. Norwood's fantastic. It's affordable, it's on uh public transportation, you have a lot of amenities. So you're seeing a lot of domestic migration moving into town as well. That domestic migration are, obviously, it's a safe town with lots of amenities. You're getting families moving in. And with these families come additional children, and also come children that also have special education needs too. So when they come in, uh, So when they come in, um, one of the things that, that a lot of people may not know is with special education class, if a student comes in with an IEP, we must service that IEP as it's written. We don't get a chance.
I, I understand all that. I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm not criticizing it. I'm just wondering if you have enough resources to deal with all of that. I'm familiar with IEPs and five oh fours and English language learners. I'm concerned, uh, we, do we have enough revenue in the school budget to adequately serve these students?
So I would say, okay, first of all, the answer to your question about language is sixty different home languages we sent home in translations. Um, we can always use additional resources for our special education population and our English language learner population. I will never say no that we could not find a way to better utilize and be more effective in that department. However, what we have is what I think we're doing the most of what we have. And we haven't found that this, we know with the budget, as, as uh Matt just talked about and all the different cuts we had to make. That if we were adequately able to serve, which we are, we're going to maintain that status quo. But if we get more resources, we have no problem serving those, those special needs populations because we know that we could be more effective and more efficient. But we don't have any other additional revenue at this time, but after the higher down savings, we will look at our budget to see, you know, people retire, people resign from jobs all the time. And we can see from our higher down savings if we will be able to add additional resources for our special education department as well as our English language learners.
And additionally, I, if you remember, last year there was funds that were supplied for a special, a student's process audit within the school system. So we are, um, it's out to the, out to the street right now. It is being advertised. It is an open bidding period right now for an RFP. We do expect those to be coming in at the end of May and to be having an audit firm that will be um, will be hired and ready to go. For July first, the new superintendent will be great timing for this new superintendent coming in. And be able to, they're going to look at all of those services to see, you know, where we're doing things well, where we need help and where uh any issues may, might lie within the.
Right.
District.
Great.
Yes, one of the articles we're going to vote on is transportation costs for the migrants. Uh, so the question is, how much of that hundred and four dollars purchased seems was designated for the country transportation?
So the specific article you're speaking of, it is um, it was a, a pilot that was done by the state, which is um, McKinney-Bento funds, uh, and we are, I funded our to get those funds to the school to pay for um, the cost of transportation. So um, we're not receiving, so of the whole hundred and four dollars, uh, the majority of our students that, that we have, we don't have a lot. And, and half of them came in halfway through the year. So the, 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 you know, the, the flow of money of when that money is actually coming in, we've only received twelve thousand dollars so far of the funds for those students. Um.
I think it, it's just under thirty.
Yeah, in total.
Thirty-four, yeah, yeah.
I think it was right around fourteen, fifteen that came in mid-year. So.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, we received about twelve thousand dollars. Um, we, we do anticipate receiving some more this year. Um, and that money is, again, we, we haven't counted on that money yet because I, again, I wasn't here to start of the year, but I was telling the district that I wasn't, you have to be very careful about that because that money is not in your hand yet. And we all understand that. If we don't have cash in hand, we can't spend it. It is quarterly, um, but they're sort of off on the quarters right now, so it's, it's not exactly flowing. Like I expect a quarter to come, which again was the warning that I gave when I, when I was talking about this. So, you know, we've received about twelve thousand dollars. I, I, I'm hoping by the end of May, we might see the next payment, which we don't know how much that's going to be. But you're going to see the majority, it's going to start to flow into the next fiscal year, which we can't use this right here. So we haven't used any, uh, to, to answer a question, we haven't used any of that money yet because we don't really have it yet. So um, we do have, um, one of the things that did happen with, with the, the international migrants that came in was the, the students had the opportunity to stay in their homeschool that they were originally in, and that's just the right thing to do for students. However, homeless that live within our borders, we own fifty percent of that cost. It's statute and we're required to pay it. So that's a big portion of what's being hit. And I did, I fought with the other school. I said, you're getting a hundred and four dollars for each of these students per day. Why aren't you paying for that transportation to pull? Again, I couldn't win that, that fight because I didn't have a leg to stand on, but I tried. Um, so yeah, that money, we have about fifty thousand dollars right now that's just based on that kind, that type of transportation where we own half of the cost. And that's what I need that money to come in to help support because that money, the intent of that money was to come in and to reduce the local burden um, that we're all feeling from the tax payer. So um, we're, we're hoping to get that money approved through town meeting and we can use that to offset this cost. Sure.
Um, so. Um, on the, on the special needs side, how many students are from other towns that come to North?
Zero, yeah, we, yeah, these are all our, yeah.
Still have the one student pushing in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With one, yeah.
Fair enough, we have one. There's tuitioning from Dedham, um, mainly because uh Dedham had some problems with their elevators. Um, the elevators were working, but they were also using a freight elevator, so that's not exactly welcoming to it. Yes, the student attends our schools and we charge a tuition of uh forty-seven thousand dollars we receive for that student to attend our schools. And we use that, we use that to, every year that is used to offset, but that student, I believe, is easier, I believe is aging out this year, um, at the end of this year, so. Yes, your question?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, we're going to talk, is that person, did they need you or?
What's that?
Talk us about this?
No, we get a hundred and four, so for the, you know, the international migrants, we get a hundred and four dollars per student per day. Those students are here for a hundred and eighty days, it's eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars roughly. Um, so, but you only get it, they pay it per day because they are moving, they, they, without notice, which isn't very fair to these families. They will just say, hey, we're going to move you, you know, over to this town, over to this town. So that's why they're doing it per day because they want to make sure that the money's following the student where they're going.
Did I hear you right saying they could move to our town? They could still go to school where they came from?
Yes, so whenever you're homeless, you are, you have the right as a student to go to your homeschool that you were originally. That is a right of any student. It doesn't matter where they locate that student. So they could take students from Norwood and they could put them in housing in Boston. We are responsible to bus them back there because they have a right to their education in their homeschool. Um, that is statute and we cannot fight that, or do I really have the stomach to do so? It's, it's about uh normalizing for the students and you're normalizing during a time when everything else is not normal.
And it's both ways. So we have a student here that's going to school here, they become homeless and they get a shelter in Boston and they still want to come to Norwood. Then they could still come to Norwood, but Boston has to bust them out.
Yeah, so we have a fifty-fifty cost share with Boston, and Boston would, would pay for fifty percent of the cost.
The, um, the children that came from North Attabro to Norwood.
Yes.
But if some of those children wanted to still go to the North Attabro schools. The North Attabro schools would have been the original homeschool, right?
Yep.
So North Attabro is paying for these students that are going to Norwood?
It's a fifty-fifty, a fifty percent cost share. So they pay fifty percent of the bill, we pay fifty percent, but they get the, they're getting a hundred and four dollars per day, which is, you know, they're using that to offset their transportation. We don't get that because the students are not actually attending our school.
And we have some students that are still in North Attabro and so they, they may just want to finish this year and make them over to Norwood after the summer, but it's their option.
And that's a total, I think, of one, seven students, I think.
Yeah.
Total across K to twelve, so um. Other questions on the school budget?
All right, I guess we'll call night one a close. I'll stick around for a little while if anyone has any additional uh questions. We'll be back here Wednesday night where we'll talk a little bit about basics of municipal finance, in-town meeting one-on-one, and then Thursday night for the special town meeting one. Thank you everyone for coming and having.